To order the Select Board meeting for December 3, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by the Needham Channel, the town's YouTube channel, and via Zoom, and is being recorded for publication and later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they are required to notify the chair first so that the chair, that's me, can inform our other attendees. I have received notification that Needham Observer is recording, but if there's anyone else in attendance wishes to record, let me know at this time. Thanks. And so next up, we have public comment. We have one public comment. Victoria, come on up. So your name, your address, and three minutes. We don't reply after, we just.
Victoria Derochenka, 19 Beach Street. So I'm here to oppose Mills Field Dog Park. Before I get to my points, I would like you to think about one question that my neighbor Julie Tracy was not able to ask at the last Select Board meeting due to time limit. Start of quote, "It was mentioned at one of the meetings by a non-dog owner Select Board member that she desired to be able to coexist with dogs. I share that desire, however, I would ask this person, would you want a dog park literally across the street from your house?" End of quote. Beach Street is a small side street with just nine houses that have Mills Field either in their back or front yard. There are several other similar streets in our area that are experiencing all current Mills Field activities one way or another. There are three seasons sport fields used by our schools and daycare's, and there are multiple viewers during place. Yes, our neighbors are using Mills Field to walk their dogs, and we're happy to see them, but no one is staying in one corner or creating a noise. They walk around, and there are no more than two, three dogs at a time. In our view, having a dog park on the little green space left in front of our windows is too much. Also, take into consideration that parking area is limited, cars are often parked on all adjacent streets, green lawn flats during heavy rains. A few weeks ago during Dog Park Findings presentation, I was shocked that everything was considered except residents who live around Mills Field. Many of us are working from home, including my husband and I. The noise coming from Dog Park may impact our ability to walk and decrease our life quality. Also, all of us have dogs who will experience anxiety because of continuous barking and noise outside of our windows. April Needham Observer had a comment from Mr. Paulson about the other towns' nice Dog Parks. I took time to check all three Newton-Fence Dog Parks and took pictures and videos. All three are not in the immediate residential area. In fact, two of them are far from residence and are in industrial area surrounded by major streets and mass bike. Two of three fields on Monday morning were occupied with about 10, 20 barking dogs accompanied by dinging collar tags and screaming, clapping dog walkers. I also visited our Needham Dog Park for the first time and saw a lot of potential. It has all the amenities already that with a little improvement can be a great space. Why can't we use it? It's isolated area, and everyone can accommodate. It will be nice for owners, dogs, and neighborhoods. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much. Carol, anyone else, anyone else online?
Yes, Joe Matthews would like to speak.
All right. I'm giving three minutes. Hey, Joe.
It's not over yet.
All right. Hosters.
Yep, one second. Just took a minute to load.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I sent the comments just beforehand, so sorry for no chance to review. Do this quickly. So yeah, Joe Matthews, precinct I, Rosemary Street, and I'm responding to some of the comments that I've heard about the neighborhood housing plan and the financial committee's opinion on it. So, "Learning to walk before we can run," I think that was the expression, and it sounds like a good principle, but except in the case where the economic foundation of your state and region is crumbling under crushing housing costs, and in that situation, you should probably start hustling. And I want it to be clear, because people, I think, are not understanding that the financial committee did not find that the housing plan would have a negative impact on the finances of the town, but they just said that other people analyses could be wrong. And the financial committee is supposed to provide an impartial analysis of the pros and cons of any proposed policy, but it should be no surprise when they're considering only negatives and ignoring the positives that they end up recommending against things. The housing plan is economic policy, and analysis of it is much more complicated than simply looking at line items. What the financial committee and others are not recognizing is that we are already paying the costs of not addressing housing. The main expenses in this town are from labor and increases in it which are driven in large part by inflation. The dominant factor, according to government statistics, in inflation since early 2023 has been shelter cost, which is housing and rents. The next union contract that comes up will certainly point to CPI to justify an increase in salaries. That is a real and quantifiable negative financial impact to the town, and if Massachusetts can spur, meaningfully spur, housing construction, inflation due to housing costs can be reduced. How is our society supposed to function if we can't build four-story apartment buildings next to train stations, not because of any actual impact, but only because of the perceived risk of an extra student per classroom a decade down the road? This is simply not good public policy, and this is why every economist, public policy expert, and elected official is in favor of multifamily housing near public transit. We should be leaders like Lexington in addressing this solution. The portrait of a Needham graduate was developed, I believe, after I finished the schools, but I would be stunned if doing the bare minimum and waiting for others to solve problems was part of the things they were teaching in that curriculum. So to all voters, all that is being asked of you is simply to not object to multifamily housing near train stations. You don't have to do anything else. The apartments or condos that will be built here are going to be for the teachers that teach the town's childrens, nurses and physicians that care for the sick, retirees and elderly looking to downsize, or young Needham high grads looking to get out on their own at a lower price point. The housing plan may not be perfect, but zoning rarely is perfect, and it must evolve with the times. The base plan is decent policy, but it was the policy that we needed 15 or 20 years ago. The housing plan moves us forward in the right direction, and we should all be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. You spiked a landing.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, grant of location for 43 Whitman Road. We have Joanne Callender. Want to bring her over?
She's Joanne. Good evening.
Good evening, Joanne.
Hello.
What do you have today?
So, Eversource is, I'm here to obtain a grant of location for 43 Whitman Road to install nine feet of conduit from code 416 over 4 to the customer's property.
Excellent, okay. Kate, is everything in order?
Yes.
Everything's in order. Does anyone on the board have questions, comments, criticisms? Okay, done. All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom have a comment? No hands, no one in the room? All right. I'd welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately nine feet of conduit in Whitman Road.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Joanne?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Take care. Bye. All right, next up, grant of location for Tolman Street. This is continuation from November 26, 2024. Do we have Alex Morello? We don't, he's not here.
Ask to continue it again.
Okay. Thank you. So I am going to suggest there has been a request that Butters and Verizon need to discuss and need to get together. So I suggest that we move that we continue this hearing until our next meeting on December 17.
So moved. Second.
All right. This is a public hearing, to continue a public hearing. There are no comments, right? Okay. Maybe I, that might have been parliamentary overkill. Okay. So we have, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We do.
All right, let's throw all those in favor continuing this hearing until December 17.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up, snow and ice update. Karis Lustig, Director of Public Works, Shane Mark, come on up.
Mr. Chair, I move the appointments and consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So we're going to talk about snow and ice? All right. Now, I know, I speak for everyone in town, we welcome winter's icy grip.
No.
And we love snow, so tell us how much we're going to get and what we're going to do about it.
So I love snow, but I would not venture to say that I can predict exactly how much we're going to get. We do subscribe to a few different forecasting models that we have that provide us some updates, and they are predicting what they refer to as a normal winter, which is sort of hard to articulate, but typically for this area, that's between 35 and 45 inches. Now, whether or not that comes in the quote-unquote "normal" fashion, where you have sort of a sustained winter, or that comes in sort of fits and starts like we've seen when we have had wintery seasons in the past few years, where we've had heavy events and then it's melted, we'll see, but they predicted that the highest likelihood of snow is going to be in December and January this year, which is upon us, so we shall see. As you are well aware, we've had two relatively mild winters in a row, and what typically happens when we have mild seasons is that there is increased pressure on what is already a decreased number of contractors who are willing to do this particular type of work. It makes their equipment much more valuable in the construction market than it is in the snow removal market, and snow removal is very difficult, you know, on equipment. And anyone who is going to buy new pieces of equipment may or may not choose to buy snow removal equipment based on the utilization that we've had in the past couple of years. We have, I believe, enhanced our contracts to make them very attractive. We offer minimum guaranteed work, so a certain number of hours per year that they're guaranteed to receive payment for, whether or not it snows. We have bonuses for signing up early and providing us inspection early, and then we have commitment bonuses for being available for every single storm. So we've really tried to put as many incentives as possible into our contractor, our contractor contracts. The unfortunate side of it is that while we have enough pieces of equipment, we don't have the right type of equipment. So we're attracting more small pickup trucks and not the heavier pieces, which are really necessary for us to be able to deal with our main roads and our parking lots. So that's where we're going to be reorganizing our own existing staff and our own equipment. We've developed a pretty robust pool of our own equipment, so that way we can use more of those pieces during the winter and refocus those pieces in parking lots or on main roads, depending on what type of storm that we have. We also are in a period of transition within Public Works. We have five vacancies right now in our union positions, and those are the individuals who operate our equipment. We have backfilled the last couple of years while we've been in transition with management staff, and we will continue to do that this year. For context, I think two winters ago, we had 15 vacant positions, so we're in a better position than we were, but we're still playing catch-up when it comes to getting licensed staff in. We have a much more robust training program in the last two years. We have put our entire staff through an enhanced training program, partially because we have had a lot of turnover and partially because they aren't dealing with snow, so they need the refresher. Typically, snow is sort of the muscle that we keep on exercising every year, and we might be a little bit out of practice based on the past couple of years. I just wanted to remind the board that right now, the town does not have a blacktop policy, which means that we do not guarantee at the end of a storm that we will have black roads. Many of our communities budding us do have these policies, but whether or not they actually meet them, I would question. So I would rather not have the policy, but have an expectation that we will continue to provide safe roads through snow events. What this decrease in staff and equipment ultimately means, I think, for residents in town is that, again, it just may be a slightly slower progression when we have snow events. Our primary focus when we have snow events is on public safety. We make sure that there's one lane of travel for ambulances and police vehicles to be able to come and service the community. We get a lot of calls sometimes that'll say like, "Oh, you forgot to push out the second side of the road," and we didn't forget, that's our primary approach while we're in an event, and then we push back the town and open it up. It just may take a little bit longer for us to push back the town and open up. And if we get into an event where there's heavy accumulation, we may need to redirect town resources from parking lots into main roads, again, for that public safety element, and then redistribute them back into the parking lots affecting the downtown and the Along with sort of the general snow and ice update that I'm providing, we also had implemented a pilot about four years ago for the downtown, which had a small area within the downtown that the town would provide snow removal services over evening hours. So we're in the fourth year of the pilot, but to be frank, really only the second, because we really haven't had any measurable snow in the past two years to really see what the success of that pilot is. And I'm requesting that we actually suspend that pilot until we either rectify the staffing issues that we have within DPW or the contractor issues. I don't know if, the feedback we have received has been mixed from the business community as far as the success of it. The scope of it is obviously quite limited, so it doesn't have a vast impact. I think there's been confusion overnight. A lot of the business owners and building owners have their own contractors that come in, and then they get confused between our staff and their staff and what they're doing. And we're also not providing snow removal during the daytime hours, which is when it's really most valuable for a lot of the people trying to access the businesses. And the reason for that is the type of equipment that we operate is large. It has like large snow blowers on it, and it really wouldn't be safe for us to be operating that while the downtown is in use. So we'll be working with the Economic Development Manager and having conversations with the business community on what other opportunities we could help provide them. One of the struggles we have as a municipality is we, for contracting plowing drivers, we have an exemption from mass procurement law that allows us to get several different contractors in to help us. We don't have the same exemption that applies to shoveling. It only applies to plowing. So we can't hire a landscaping firm or someone else to just provide shoveling services for the downtown. We may be able to help the downtown businesses procure their own services because they obviously have a lot more flexibility than the community does. But it's been hard to evaluate a pilot when you don't have any snow to actually measure up the success of that pilot.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about that? My recollection is that there was new piece of equipment that was procured for the pilot program. Will that be able to be used in other ways?
Yes, so that, the first piece that we bought was actually for that pilot, but I believe we have five or six now currently in rotation. It gets used both by the DPW staff. We clear all the handicap accessible ramps in town, and as you can probably tell, we've been implementing a lot more handicap accessible ramps, which means that there's a lot more to clear out, so it'll still be used by that hand crew. It's a pretty intense job during a snow event. They're out there in the elements for the entire duration, and this helps make that job a little bit easier. But it's also being used at the schools, and because there's a pretty, again, there's a pretty significant amount of space at each of the schools that needs to be cleared, both for access to the school and then also play areas, because of liability reasons, the schools would like as much play area as possible cleared off, and so it helps provide benefit for them as well. So it will definitely be used.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Karis, I understand we haven't had a lot of snow recently, but I understand that when we don't have snow, we have ice, and that's maybe even harder to deal with. Have you guys been like salting the sidewalk in the pilot area, and how will that continue or not?
So no, we do not salt the sidewalk in the pilot area. The only place that we salt in the downtown are the sidewalks at a but town property, so around the common and the town hall, we have not salted, and we have communicated with the business owners that it was their responsibility to salt. There isn't a really good mechanism to salt the same way for sidewalks as there is for roadways. Even just like the sidewalk tractors that we use to plow the over 50 miles of sidewalk, you have to refill the hopper of that sidewalk tractor like every, I think, 500 feet. So as you can imagine, it's not a particularly, we've had to do it occasionally, and sometimes what we'll do when it's really bad, like if we've had an ice storm, is we'll just start at the schools and work our way out, because it can take quite a while to get the full route. But it's not something that we can just easily do, the same way as putting salt down on the road is a much simpler process. As far as icing goes, we do have a new, more aggressive anti-icing program that the highway department has been undertaking. The problem is, is that it does require the conditions to be dry before an event. And what we have found, at least in the last two years, as we've been on that rain-snow line, and so you really can't do any pretreatment because the water would dilute anything you put down.
Would that be the same for, I mean, I know you have this brine project coming, it's not this year, but it's next year. Will that be the same with the brine solution?
Yes, that's what it is, is we use the brine for, so currently, we're purchasing the brine, and we're applying it through a liquid application, but once we get the, provided the CIP gets funded and we purchase the brine machine, then we would make the brine in-house. But like last year, when I educated the board on salt doesn't work until it goes into a solution, so when we apply salt, we do have wetting agents on the trucks that are wetting the salt as it hits the ground, so we activate the salt ahead of time, and as the moisture gets into the salt and it goes into a solution, that's what makes the salt work and break the bond or delay the bond for the snow and ice to the pavements. You can't put it down if it's wet conditions, like if it rained, like the events we've had where it's rain and then it switches to snow, you don't want to put the brine down because when the rain comes down, it's just going to wash it out, and it's what we refer to as dilution of solution. So it's really a waste of product and time to try to put it down there if you're going to have a high moisture content event that switches over to snow.
Okay.
So, we can't tell if we're generally warming yet, basically, but is that something that we need to consider?
So, I think when we've talked to the meteorologists about what climate change rate means for this area, I think there, this is the thing that keeps me up at night, I think there's just this likelihood that we end up with a 2014, 2015 snow season as we end up with a 2023 snow season. And that's where it becomes challenging, because we have staff and fleet and equipment that really is to, will get us through that 2014, 2015 season, but if that happens once a decade as opposed to every two or three years, it just becomes more challenging on how to maintain the stamina on those programs. The anti-icing protocols are still the best thing that we have as far as ice management goes, just unfortunately, they're limited as far as how the weather comes in and what the storms end up looking like. Three years ago, when we started using the pre, the brine solutions, we did have the right conditions to come in. It's just the last two years we haven't, and ice is a lot more challenging as far as the timing, particularly of these events where you end up with maybe pre-freezing temperatures before dawn and then freezing temperatures at dawn when school starts. So we have been working with the custodians over the past couple of years to make sure that they have a salt-sand mix on site, so if they do have spot areas, that they can put down some traction and sort of steer students away from those particular areas that are more prone to icing, because once it ices, it then takes time to break that bond down and not have that ice issue there. So it's not an instantaneous process, which I think a lot of people think it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, so I'm thinking back to the meeting we had, I guess, a year ago, and you guys discussed the fact that Needham has a model where we're sort of 50% town and 50% contractors, and, you know, we have very unpredictable seasons now, and you were mentioning that we're having trouble, I guess, contracting out the bigger pieces of equipment. So does that tend to reinforce the idea that it's good to have 50/50 mix of town contract? Does it make you rethink it? Like, how does it affect your thinking on that?
So I think we have an advantage that some of our neighboring communities that are more like 80% contracted out are really struggling. They're really in tough shape because they don't have as robust a staffing program as we do. So I'm certainly thankful that we are closer to 50/50. I think what we are investigating is how to refurbish our existing equipment to maintain it, and then what are the different staffing models to get drivers, right? So we have talked to retired individuals who have CDL licenses. We've talked to the schools about they have bus drivers, but obviously Needham has a reputation of not canceling schools, so the bus drivers and our plow drivers are often working at the same time, and they have the same issue recruiting people who have licenses. So we're trying to think about alternative measures to try to bring in more people to operate the equipment that we have. And I think we're going to continue talking about growing that pool of heavy equipment in particular, because that is where the market is not providing us. Like I said, we try to have around 30 pieces of equipment, and that is what we currently have, but it's almost exclusively pickup trucks and landscapers, and what we actually need are the bigger pieces of construction equipment in order to help us with those main roads.
Okay. Great. All right. So you did a pilot program, and the snow didn't show up. Okay. Can you just speak briefly at the blacktop policy? We don't have one, but like, what's that entail? There's a new term to it, but, you know, like...
So some public works departments will say that their staff does not go home until all the roads are black and running clear. Whether or not that's a realistic expectation or necessarily the goal, I'm not entirely sure. The reason being, some parts of town, for example, the sign, the angle that it's at doesn't hit all the parts of town, so to get something to run clear that has a snowpack on it is much more complicated. I have not seen a community that says they have a blacktop policy actually live up to that expectation. So sometimes we'll get calls that will say like, "There's a little bit of snow, there's a little bit of, that it's not running clear at blacktop." And we feel like as long as it's safe for a person to drive at the speed limit on that road, that that's really the most important part, is to leave it in a condition that is safe.
Okay.
Not necessarily wet and clear.
Okay.
Also, because that can sometimes refreeze, and that can cause more problems.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
I just have one other thing. Again, we extend the invitation, anyone from the Select Board that would like to come out and experience the conditions that our plow operators experience, we're more than welcome to have you come, and we'll educate you on what we do with the inside baseball and put you in a plow truck, and maybe even recruit you to drive the plow truck, get your CDL one. Hire you on to plow for us.
I think especially if it actually snows, because I think many of the members of the board have not been around when it's actually been snowing.
I did. It's great. I highly recommend it.
We did it last year. Yeah. It's great. Highly recommend.
And the trucks are much bigger than what you think, once you get inside of them.
And when you hit something, the plow hits something, all your feelings fall out of your mouth, like, oh my, it goes right through you. It's a tough job. Thank you. Very good. Yes.
Can I ask a different question if we're finished with this question? First of all, I realized last week I didn't say thank you for the speed signs that are on Webster and Manning now, and I wanted to say thank you for those, and also at, what is it, at the corner at Sudbury. That one caught my attention because it said "too fast" when I was going through that light. I admit, I have not been too fast since the first time that happened to me, so it had the desired result. Particularly on Manning Street, I really appreciate it because I lived on Manning, so I'm accustomed to going slowly there, but many cars now don't, which is unfortunate. So thank you to the division for that. There's been a question on Facebook related to lights, streetlights, and I believe it's related to private ways, although that doesn't seem to be necessarily well-understood. So I just wondered if you might talk about the current state of streetlights and streetlight maintenance and how maybe we can help people to know if they live on a private way? Thank you.
So I guess a couple things there. Maybe I'll start with private ways and then go to streetlights. So the clearest indication of a private way, it's a little complicated because there's clearly signed, there are signed-named private ways, and there are non-signed-named private ways. So if you live on a signed road that has a separate name, that has a sign on the top of it that is either blue or red that says "private," that's probably the first one. The second one is a little more complicated because we have a lot of smaller paper roads in town that may have a road, I happen to grow up in one, that the street name is the same as the main road, but they are actually separate roads. They often look like driveways, and you'll have three or four houses on them. It really is a matter of looking up information on your It really is a matter of looking up information on your plot plan and you can certainly call the town engineering department and we would gladly provide that information. So that's the sort of the private way side of it. The streetlight side of it, from my understanding about some of the conversations that are around right now on streetlights are, um, the town owns, the town has purchased the streetlights that are on town, that are on Verizon poles through the town on public ways and in the right-of-way. There's sort of two different scenarios. You have a private road that might have a streetlight. That would be on a private property. And unless there's an easement for the town, we don't necessarily have the responsibility nor the access to that to maintain it. The second thing is there are some subdivisions that when they were accepted by the town a long time ago, sometimes the lights are on private property and are connected directly to the home meters. And sometimes they are connected to the grid directly. We only pay and maintain the lights that are connected to the grid directly. So if it's running through the home or it's on private property, that makes it more complicated. So I know there's been some inquiries into the town engineering office about certain like light fixtures and we'll more than happy to go out and investigate and make sure that the correct person has the correct responsibility. Then I guess the question comes up, if it's physically located on private property, we don't have the right to access that for maintenance purposes. So we'd have to have a conversation with the homeowner. I think that, I'm hoping that kind of answers both your questions. The other thing is there is some information on the website that we will clarify. We do have a contractor. We are maintaining streetlights. Since we converted to LEDs, we've had much fewer requests for issues. The LED lights that we have have a 10-year-plus lifespan. So they're not running into the same problems that the old high-pressure sodium lights were that only had a three-year lifespan.
And if people have a problem, the best place is Seek, Click, Fix to report that. There is, um, I had talked to Kate and I went looking for the private way listing. It seems like it's attached to a policy and it's quite dated. And I suspect that there's, because of all the little subdivisions and things, that there's some changes. So is that something that we will try to find a time to update and then put maybe on its own on the website so it's findable?
Yeah, there's two or three additional roads that need to get added to it. And yes, we're looking at updating that list.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, as long as we're talking about private ways, some are plowed by the town and some are not, right?
Yes.
And the listing says that, level of detail, which is good to know.
Right.
And if you want to know the difference, it's a, above it, the red and blue. If it says, if it says private way and it's red, we do not plow. If it's blue, we do plow.
And if it has no sign, we do not plow it. So if it's a paper road and I've had an individual who's called me on a major road and they're like, you didn't plow this major road. I'm like, I think I would have heard if we unplowed the major road. We just hadn't plowed the small spur that these three or four houses were off of. So if you're, feel like you live off of a driveway, it probably is a private road.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
I think you're every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, introduction, introduction of Needham's first poet laureate. It's Rob McLean, library director. Come on up. If the rest is, Iain is speaking Haiku.
Welcome in.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm Rob McLean, the library director for the town. And I'm excited to be here with Anne Naidem. A brief history, last fall, the town manager's office came up with a brilliant idea to seek a grant from the cultural council to fund a poet laureate program. Received that funding and this summer we advertised that we were looking for candidates being Needham's first poet laureate. Early this fall, the selection committee, including Kate and Chair Keen, we met and selected Anne Naidem to be our first poet laureate. We're really excited. The library's participation will be the sort of administrators of the program, working with Anne to help with planning and marketing the various events across town during her reign to bring poetry to every corner of Needham to celebrate the work that she does and the written word. So I just want to introduce Anne Naidem to the board. And if you want to.
I just, yeah, I'm really excited about this. I was excited when I heard that we were trying to, you know, the town was trying to put together a program. I think, I think it's going to be like being an ambassador for poetry as a tool to just find ways to connect us through it. And, um, and also because this is the first time we've done it, we're kind of making it up as we go along. So any ideas anybody has, you know, let me know. But I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a great way to help pull the community together.
Absolutely. If I can speak for the selection committee, I think we're really not just amazed by the quality of Anne's poetry, but also her commitment to Needham and the work that she's done to, in the schools, with Needham Open Studios. You know, she had this real commitment to the community. And I think that's the exciting part for us is that poetry is one thing and it's the important thing. But creating a stronger Needham, you know, by enhancing community events with poetry and the power of the work that Anne does is going to be really exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Evidently qualified. It'll be exciting for the town to have a poet laureate. I like the sound of it.
Anyone else? Comments?
Welcome.
Anne, I'm looking forward to it. So, so I know when I go on vacation, I am often texting Kate when I find poetry in the wild. So I think if I go back through all my text streams, I can find a number of places that I think provide good example. I was sitting here tonight thinking, what do, what do we have? I mean, so things like the poetry that comes out when it rains and becomes visible then. There was something that was recently tied to a walk in town where at various stations along the walk, it was a poetry walk. And so there were poems that were tied to various parts of the town. So I look forward to your making it up as we go along and to taking advantage of a lot of those things.
Welcome. I really look forward to seeing what you do. I also, original poetry I've seen is part of your specialty as well. So look forward to seeing any originals that you come up with.
You've already told me I have to write at least one for the town.
The chair has been pushing for a particular event.
Have, haven't I? But Longfellow did one famously, so you should be able to.
I feel like this would be an excellent subject for a mural. We have lots of, we have lots of walls that need filling, so.
Do you want to talk about our first events that we're having?
So yeah, we're diving right in. Tomorrow, there will be two events at the library. In the morning, there is poetry club. And that club has been meeting all along, so I'm just invited to join in.
It's at 12:30, right?
At 12:30. So I guess not the morning technically. Okay, 12:30. And then in the afternoon at 3:00, there's a program for teens and up that's going to get everybody writing poetry. It's going to be blackout and found poetry. So yeah, anybody who's available, come on in and create poetry with us.
That's good. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for sharing, you know, your time and talent with the town to make it all more accessible.
This is great. I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. And so from poetry, we go into approved sale of bond anticipation note. And we have a poet, Dave Davison. Please come up. All right. Good to see you all. So you've been extraordinarily busy.
As always.
Who do we?
Evening, Mr. Chair. The, we come before you to seek the board's approval of a sale on anticipation note. It's a short-term borrowing. And as noted in the memo, two interesting facts. One is that interest rates have come down a little from the last note that we have issued. And secondly, it's very rarely do you see, first, we had highest number of bidders for the note that we have had in a long time, six bidders. That's really remarkable. But was also remarkable is everyone had the same coupon rate of 4%, suggesting that everybody is not sure where interest rates are going and not hinting that they're going down, they're not hinting that they're going up. So it was quite interesting. The tiebreaker, of course, was the premium that was offered to determine the net interest cost to the town. The winning bidder is actually new. We haven't seen this entity before. And they were truist was the company who won the bid. And with their premium $42,624, they're offering effectively a net interest cost to the town of just, just over 2.95%, 2.96%.
Great.
Is that, is that something that we need to be concerned about? That this is a new player in the market? Or at least someone that we've not worked with before?
Someone else wanting to lend us money is a good sign.
Okay.
All right. And then we, I don't want to step on your toes. We also have a bond notice that's maturing on the 19th, right?
This is the purpose of, this borrowing is effectively, we're rolling the loan. We're doing some pay downs on that band that matures on December 19th. And the portion that we are not paying down from appropriations has to be rolled over with the new law.
Okay.
So that's why the timing of this is for December 19th as well.
All right. And then this one will come due June, in June 20?
It'll come due in July.
July, yes. Excellent. All right.
To that point, will there be a more, a long-term note that will be issued?
We'll make the determination in the summer based upon the progress made on the different projects, what the marketplace looks like in terms of interest rates and also whether or not there'll be any further pay downs before bonding. It's always, those decisions are always made about 60 days prior to the borrowing.
Which projects are these?
This is primarily the Emory Grover project. And it is also for water distribution improvements and the water service connections, replacing the lead line connections. And another borrowing associated with, uh, well, actually, it's the first borrowing associated with the Claxton Field project.
And winding down the Brahman and Elliott?
Oh, no, this is not winding down. We're only, it's only starting. We still have another building due next year.
Okay, yeah. All right. Any thoughts? What do you need to say? Does anyone have any comments, questions?
We need a motion. So when you're ready, I'm ready to make one.
Oh, yeah. Now, to be clear, there's motion A, B, C, D, E, and F.
But we can make a motion to move the motions as presented in the materials.
But isn't it more entertaining?
To read all of them aloud?
You did volunteer.
If that's the case, she shouldn't do it. She's sick.
I wouldn't do that. Somebody else can do that.
We can make a motion, Kate, to.
As shown on the fact sheet.
Yes, it was previously advertised and published, available for anybody to inspect. So it's clear what the motions are.
Just to ask the town manager, I usually notice the town clerk here for these. Is that?
She will be coming, but the board can move forward.
So the question is, is everybody here acting under their own free will?
Exactly. I am.
And there's two pages, so you'll see duplicates. So the first page looks like the second page. It's because it is, so.
All right, so we need a motion.
I moved.
I moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Do you want to come to the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous enough. Do we need it? Louise here?
No, you're recorded. And the town clerk is well aware that you are taking action on this this evening. And in fact, she will be applying the town seal on some of the documents after they're executed by the board.
Okay.
This evening. So.
Want to run those down?
Ooh, I see one extra one here. Do you have one more sticky? I presume you need this one signed too?
I do not. That's for the.
There's a duplicate for you.
There are two documents that the clerk of the select board must sign.
The clerk's big moment tonight.
Wow.
As the board is signing those documents, we would anticipate the next borrowing to happen at the end of May or the beginning of June. Again, as the board had asked, is the time, the specific time will be dependent on the market conditions and such. And I would anticipate some of the, we'll be finalizing the, we should be finalizing the Emory Grover project. There's still a significant amount to be borrowed. The project has been completed. The vendors, the contractors are being paid. We'll just need to get the cash to cover those payments. I would anticipate the next phase of the rooftop units will be underway and there'll be a large cash demand for that as well. As well as the Claxton Field project will be much further along.
Okay.
For the second one.
There we go.
There you go.
We got it done next time.
It's right down to your left.
Is it? Yes. There it is.
I think we may be able to start while they're signing.
Want to jump next?
I'm okay with that.
We all can't wait to talk about the CIP.
Right. All right, we're going to jump to the next agenda item. Eliminating fiscal year 2026, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan. The CIP, eight Chris Patrick, Dave Davison, Katie King, and Cecilia.
And Elise is a bonus.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if we could start, excuse me, with the capital budget document, which is the shorter of the documents with the bigger font. The, as you know, the, the first year of the capital plan. The, as you know, the first year of the capital plan is the capital budget that we're recommending to you for inclusion in the capital plan and would eventually end up in the annual town meeting warrant. And at this point in early December, there are a number of items that are not recommended unless there's additional funding that's been identified. Typically, when the proposed annual budget comes out at the end of January, there are more that are being recommended and often even more when the warrant comes out. So there is very well, will be more projects and this is really a fluid document. Just to talk about a few of the ones we mentioned last week, some of our guardrails in trying to get the requests down to the roughly $9 million that we're assuming is available for this portion of the free cash, we prioritize those items that had been identified in the past or that were somehow life and safety items to be considered. So the first one, we had talked about the coral risers. We have not, we have moved those to tier two because they weren't in the plan last year. Couple of modified items in public safety, the DFIBs and the PPE, the personal protective equipment, because they are life safety, that we included them fully in tier one. We moved out, copier replacements to move out into tier two, as well as furniture, because they weren't in the plan in 26, for 26, last year's plan, similarly to the BMS upgrades, which were modified, similar to the HVAC. As we talked about and we'll talk about in the full plan, we are recommending continuing investment in the facility projects that we started. One of the first one that you see here is the library, young adult area, so we are recommending that the young adult area project move forward, it's being designed, and we're proposing to use debt for that.
Okay.
We also talked about the high school stairs having, the condition having deteriorated such that we need to recommend funding of those. Another item in terms of carrying forward what we started, which is the theatrical lighting, sound, and rigging repairs at the Newman School. So we're recommending that that project be funded by debt, but that the design of the next phases, that the design of the next phase, which was proposed for 26, be on hold for now. So there's, some of these items aren't even categorized as tier two because we don't, the whole facility plan will be bringing to the board in this, presumably in the next number of months when we have more certainty over the Pollard project. That would include the theaters and moving forward, one of the theaters in play is Pollard. So that there's more to be known about that. The NITD support projects, this is a, this is a more difficult one. The stormwater fee started later than we had originally thought, back, I guess, in COVID when we were proposing it. And the, simply put, the expenses relating to NITD's compliance, which is water quality, not stormwater capacity, will outpace the fee that we have currently put in place. So we'll be having more conversations about that, but we need to keep the project moving, so we're proposing partial funding.
Okay.
But you can see how it won't keep up. If you look at the five-year plan, it's not going to keep up. We did reduce, as we talked about last week, the roads program, the public works infrastructure, and we're recommending what we think we can afford, but we do, and the director of public works is very adamant that we continue to try to catch up on this, so we are recommending those in tier two if funding becomes available.
Can I ask a question about that? Does that include sidewalks as well?
Roads, sidewalks, bricks and culverts, intersections.
You kept my ups in roads.
Category to be funded in, also in debt is the quiet zone, safety updates.
Yep.
We have two potential street acceptances, which we'll be talking to the board about and neighbors in the coming months. If the board decides to move forward with those, we will try to figure out how do we make them happen. The way a road acceptance would work is that there needs to be an appropriation, we spend the money, upgrade the road, and then it's paid for by betterment. So it isn't a town cost, but there's a cash flow issue that we would have to work out.
Okay.
So more to follow on that.
Yeah, $250,000, right?
Yeah, for each.
For each.
Trail resurfacing improvements, another one that it's been hard for us to prioritize, but is absolutely needed. So we've got it here in tier two. I think we need to figure out how we're going to keep that stretch of rail trail in workable condition, so there are more to follow on that. It's just hard to stretch everything into 9 million and some things fall out, and, you know, we know that we need to do this work. So it's not an indication that we don't value that trail. And then I think we talked briefly last week that many of the ways that we prioritize this funding is to put much of the fleet in the tier two category. So you'll see that except for some specific pieces of equipment that are deemed public safety or the highest need in public works. And the bus, electric bus. So that's about $9 million in cash for tier one and an additional $5 million in cash for tier two, which we certainly don't expect to, to fully fund, but we'll see what happens with cash.
How much in tier two, I'm sorry?
Five to.
5.2, almost 5.3.
And then the extraordinary project for FY26 is, again, continuing, public works facilities improvements phase two, or you could also call it the Cogswell expansion, so that's a little bit easier to remember, at 19.6 million. But we did defer design for the next phase in the project. So again, that hadn't moved forward, so it's in that category with the theater and other items. Have included potential CPC funding for the Action Park and Pickleball Court and trail signage and kiosk installation. This trail signage and kiosk, that's different than the, the trail. Yeah, the trail signage is the one that Dave Herrera and Deb Anderson came about. It's really about guiding people to trails. The trail resurfacing is the actual rail trail out.
Yeah, thank you.
Towards Dover.
Yep.
Sewer projects, the design of the Cooksbridge sewer pump station replacement. It's potential for funding of the INI program with mitigation payments. Funding projects in water that we had recommended in the prior year. And then the water service connections, we do expect that they may be funded through tier two.
Are those service connections to replace lead lines?
Lead and then now other surfaces that are required to be pulled out of the stream, including galvanized.
So I, I think that should be tier one. I think that's really important to get done as soon as possible.
We do have an appropriation that we're continuing to work on, but we hear you and that's.
But I mean, like, I have a suggestion on, like, how we can get that money and just still do everything.
Is it money or also staff time? I mean, what's the limiting factor there?
The reason it's tier two is it wasn't in the plan before. We thought we were completed with the last million dollars and the board just approved borrowing additional money to do the work. If, and there's an uncertainty to the amount of retained earnings that would be available until we get our books closed for FY24, that's really the hangup. Indicating the importance of that, that's why we still identify it as a possible debt authorization. Our hope is that there'll be sufficient cash to make it a tier one.
So my suggestion is for the NHS stairs repair, that would be eligible for capital facility funds, right? Could we use a portion of funds from that stabilization fund?
This is his water enterprise fund and those would be general funds.
No, I'm sorry. A portion, so using a portion of the capital facility funds to fund the stair repair so that there would be free cash available for?
This is the water enterprise fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, only general funds. Okay.
I think we have the same urgency and we'll know, you know, prior to town meeting, what we have for retained earnings. And if we don't have the retained earnings for cash, it's a possibility we could borrow in the water.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Just before, if you have any other questions on that, I just wanted to note, the other document is the true five-year plan that we work on. All of the, much of, most of the out years consist of what we had recommended in the past and what wasn't recommended, you know, tends to continue to be not recommended, but when we get closer, some of those decisions get made. I did want to note, Mr. Chair, that we are holding a line with no funding and no year for off-leash dog areas, so there's, it's not an imminent project. I just wanted to make that clear because we've had comment on that. And then the, the out year projects that are not started yet, continue to remain in sort of our, we're going to wait and see on those, as we had talked about last year. And those include future projects at the library, one of the projects for the Center of the Heights, future projects at Public Works, future auditoriums, other work like that, so.
Is the project at Center of the Heights, the kitchen?
It's the kitchen, the back door and the fitness room. We are recommending those projects.
Yes, we are.
In FY27 in tier one, because we have already designed them.
Right.
And we did, we did find a way to consolidate them together as opposed to making them three separate as the COA had asked us to try to do.
Okay. I guess I just, I was under the impression that, that the kitchen was last on our list of requested projects?
I believe they readjusted that to the deck to be the last, in their capital submission, that's what they did.
Sure. Well, understandable because that's a way less expensive project, but I guess I'm just wondering, it was my understanding, not that I don't want to, you know, help them out with the kitchen, but I just want to understand because it was my, what I heard from them was that they were urgently wanting the kitchen done in case the Meals on Wheels program fell through with our current provider. And I thought that we had settled that question, so is the kitchen as urgent as everything else, I guess?
We've recommended what they've asked for, so this is how they submitted it. Do you have any different intel on that?
No, just to reaffirm, we had asked them to re-vote their priorities and they bundled those three with the kitchen included, that's what they were requesting.
It is in FY27, so there's a lot, a lot more time.
Time, yeah. No, understood.
To have further conversation with them.
Design is in 26.
Design is in 26.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
The general government technology replacement on the first page, and school department technology replacement, those are both labeled school, is that correct?
Are you on the capital budget?
They're the submitting department, but the function is general government, that's why you see one says schools and the other one says general government. But the first one is who submitted it.
So who, who will be operating the equipment, like where will they?
We have a consolidated technology department now, under the umbrella of the Eden Public Schools.
I understand, okay. So this is general government technology and school department educational technology?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had, I had a couple of questions for Kate on things that you mentioned. So on the capital budget, page two, on the theatrical lighting, you mentioned that we're doing some of it, but not others of it?
We're doing the Newman.
We're just, okay, we're doing Newman and we're waiting because of Pollard and.
Right. So we're not designing the next phase in 26.
Makes sense, yeah.
Conversation can be had for next year.
Pollard coming along the lines. And then for the NITDs, I understand that our fees are not covering because the fees started late because of COVID, but will they eventually cover or is it, they're never going to cover?
They're not going to cover a million dollars, 1.6 million, Dave, what do they check?
Yes, it's, the cost of compliance has increased, the fees have not increased. We're looking at fees generating about 400,000 to 450,000 a year. And the cost is currently at 1.6 million per year and higher.
Per year, okay.
The NITDs compliance are in the multi-million dollars for many, many, many years. And that's just water quality. We also have capacity concerns as well, which is also in the multi-million dollars.
Right.
And then last question, the quiet zone, the $3.5 million will accomplish what exactly?
We expect that to accomplish the first five grade crossings and the diagnostic testing.
Okay, so everything except the golf course?
Right, although our consultant is tasked with helping us come up with ideas for the golf courses, so we're not leaving them behind, but we don't expect this funding to cover that.
It won't complete the golf course.
Is, is the Great Plain still on hold for the downtown redesign? Or how is that related to that project?
Sure, so we're going to.
Put it down, but you're here.
So the, the downtown redesign is initially going to be implementing a pilot plan, so whatever the configuration of the road is, we're going to do sort of temporary measures in order to replicate what the right of way will look like when we do a full redesign. That will likely coincide with the implementation of the quiet zone, and we are talking about, we have been talking about doing a median barrier at Great Plain Ave, so we can do that with less aesthetically pleasing flex posts and sort of temporary type treatments. And then when we do the redesign, then we can go in and put in something more aesthetically pleasing. So the intent is to include that in the initial quiet zone application, and then we'd make a modification. We're going to have to apply for an MBTA permit, any, sorry, anyways for that right of way, because we're going to be modifying the sidewalks, I'm sure we'll be doing more in that area. So we'll just modify the quiet zone at that particular time, but the treatment will be the same. It will just, we'll probably have to probably do more with the mast arms and other things as well, but the treatment would be the same as far as the quiet zone application goes. It's just one will be temporary and one will be permanent.
Is there an increased cost? Is there a cost implication of having a temporary and a permanent solution?
Median and flex posts are probably the most affordable option that we could have. It's just, like I said, it's not particularly durable or aesthetically pleasing. So I don't think there's, I mean, there's a minimal cost associated with doing that as a temporary interim measure, but it's not the large sunk cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
We'll see you again on the 17th.
Yes.
If you have questions or other suggestions, let us know.
Eden Power Choice Up. Kate, this back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the team that's been working on this, Cecilia, Dave, Gabby, Miles. Happy to report that we received favorable bids today for our Eden Power Choice name collaboration program. We're moving forward with an identified electricity supplier. I'm also very excited to point out that the proposal aligns with the guidance that you set forth, if you recall, so that all three program levels in terms of both pricing and all energy content, so we'll have more to share soon. We have, we're working out the announcement and the supplier has a three-day review period, so it just happened today, so I can't articulate who it is or what the amounts are, but we'll get them to as soon as we can, which should be very soon. You recall the guidance was, you know, the basic less than the default and the most renewable we could get, Masone Class Rex for the standard, still be below the default, so we're going to be able to.
It's amazing.
Yay. And it's, it's amazing, it's amazing work that the team put in, and it's amazing because the Everstoss default went down, which was a little bit unexpected, I think.
That's fantastic.
No, that's a win.
That is such a, such a great thing that the town can provide to the residents. I mean, that's always most. Great.
All right.
Special municipal employees. Periodically, after the board has created a number of committees, I would point out they created more than you have eliminated again. It requires that the board, again, you can do it all on a motion, but designate individual members of individual boards, separated out in the vote. So we are adding the Needham Center.
So we are adding the Needham Center Project Working Group, the Town Manager Screening Committee, the Tree Preservation Planning Committee. Didn't add that. We will bring back, I think we have one more, which is.
Large House Review.
Large House Review. I don't think it's. It's not highlighted, but it's new again. We can bring it to you next, the next meeting, it's fine. They are not fully constituted, so they won't be meeting.
Okay.
And that, ask the board to place the list of special municipal employees with the town clerk and we'll deliver it to this day.
Okay, so for those watching, a special municipal employee is?
It's a category of employee under the state ethics law that has a slightly less owner's responsibility. So regular municipal employees, including staff and the select board, are prohibited from many activities. There's slightly less for special municipal employees who can advocate for themselves in front of boards and things like that.
So they can be on the committee but still function?
They can serve on the, the tree preservation committee, but they could still represent themselves at the ZVA, for instance, if they need it.
Provided that the matter is not within the jurisdiction of.
About trees.
Yes. It's not, it's not under the tree.
Yeah, right. Okay, so the treehouse would probably.
And so just to make, make the point again, the select board and town staff are held to a much higher standard.
Okay.
I think it's really intended that you have a citizen volunteer government. It's very hard if you need to alter your premises, you have to get to Concom or something.
Okay. Any comments, questions, criticism? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would move that the select board vote designate positions as special municipal employees as suggested in the fact sheet. Can I do that? Does that sound enough?
That work, Ms. Lawyer?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you men. We have municipal, we have special municipal employees.
Just have one more item, Mr. Chair. We were very, very excited today, at the invitation of Miles Tucker, that we had a representative from the Office of the Secretary of Defense, employer support of the Guard and Reserve Program, recognizing the town of Needham as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force, which is many of our staff, but most notably here in the room, Miles Tucker, who is keeping the skies safe for us, and, you know, really reached out and had them make that designation, because we're actually very proud of it and we do, we do a lot to try to encourage people to, to hire veterans, to have opportunities for veterans and to recognize employees' right and duty to, which evidently isn't always the same for every employer, according to our representative.
Oh, good, all right. That's good, support deserves.
Add me to that.
Do we happen to know how many veterans we employ?
I did, I went down, get that for me.
Curious.
10 or 12, probably.
That's great.
Wow, okay.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the Town Manager Search Process.
Also exciting to report that we have a successful bidder for your search consultant, which is Community Paradigm Associates. They report that they have, and I won't be getting this document to you, we've got it today, they've completed over 110 municipal manager searches over the last 10 years of their operation. They are the, they're three top bidders in this area and they are in that group. I know their work, they've done a lot of, once you see it, you'll see a lot of searches that look familiar, so. And the principal, Bernie Lynch, has indicated he is available for the 17th.
Okay, great.
So I will get you this document and he will begin to talk to you and to kick off the process at your next meeting.
Great.
Great. I would just also add to that, that the town clerk has forwarded our request for town meeting member applicants to fill the town meeting member slot on the committee. So we do have a really pretty tight timeframe, so we'll ask for those applications to be in by December 17th, which is this Friday, 13th? Yes, sorry, yes, December 13th, this Friday, next Friday. Sorry.
I know what you mean.
In one of those weeks, December 13th. And we'll roll into interviews, I think, as quickly as we possibly can. So if you get your, your application in sooner, we can get that started. So that would be my request to all town meeting members who might be interested.
Thank you.
Confusing at all.
Okay, next up, ballot question. Here we want to discuss whether the board should take a position on the ballot question to be presented to voters on January 14th, 2025.
Mr. Chair? We did have a meeting with EO HLC today with the AG and I would ask Katie to give you an update.
Hey, everyone.
Hello, Katie.
Hello. As the town manager said, we have been staying in close communication with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Attorney General's Office. So we did have a meeting this afternoon and I just wanted to share, I guess, five points coming out of that meeting, just so that you are, know everything that we know. So first, we are town staff working to submit our compliance documentation to HLC this week and HLC has said they will review that and will put in writing to the town their outcome of that review as soon as possible. So they would be saying if the zoning passed by a town meeting, if they believe it to be compliant or if any tweaks would be necessary. Of course, that would be subject to the outcome of the election on the 14th, but they will give us their feedback on what we submit.
Give us that feedback first? Or are they committing to a date by which they'll give us that feedback?
Not a date, but they said that they would give an expedited review.
Okay, so before the, before the election? Or not necessarily, probably.
We should assume we would have it before the election, yeah.
But that'd be up to them.
Since we did a pre-review?
Yeah.
Is this, do we expect that it would be any different from what they said in the pre-review?
The biggest difference, my understanding, between the pre-review and the final is kind of the initial, the level of staff that do the pre-review is like the core compliance staff. The full review then gets an additional kind of managerial level of sign-off within that division. So I don't anticipate anything, anything changing because the feedback that we got from the pre-review was so minor in terms of things they wanted us to take a look at. We really didn't have any substantive deficiencies, so I would, I don't anticipate that they would all of a sudden find something that they hadn't over the summer.
Yeah. I'm cautious, the optimist. Hone did a great job.
The second item, we wanted to dig in on the question about Needham's compliance status between January 1st and 14th. It's been hard to really get clarity. They said that HLC will consider the town out of compliance for those two weeks based on the fact that our zoning is not in effect. And in their words, the zoning has been suspended pending the outcome of the election. Town Council made some arguments about if the election on the 14th affirms the town meeting vote and the zoning stays, that the effective date is actually retro to October 21st. They're taking that under advisement, but as of this afternoon, their response was we are out of compliance, January 1 to 14th. So we will let you know if we hear anything differently on that. At your last meeting, a question had come up about the town's ability to request an extension, and so we asked HLC if that was an option available to us. They are not granting any communities an extension. I think Newton was referenced as a potential example of an extension. Newton had passed zoning that was in effect and they submitted their paperwork before their deadline. When HLC reviewed Newton's, they had some minor tweaks that they wanted Newton to go back and basically clean up, like not substantive changes. And so the state had given them 180 days to do that. So I think that was the confusion. It wasn't actually an extension. We asked again about clarity about potential impacts on the Needham Housing Authority. I would say this remains completely unclear. We don't have an answer, but we did again and we have been advocating that NHAB held harmless kind of throughout this process, so, but I would say that, that one remains very much unclear.
So I can ask, unclear because is that in light of the, the new law that was just passed or for different reasons?
A few reasons. The housing authority already has been granted grants, awarded grants that are subject to MBTA compliance and in their award letters, it said that they couldn't contract for those funds until the town is compliant, but we don't know when that award period, the contracting period, would happen. So there's a timing question for those. There's a question about if HLC generally will take the town's compliance status into consideration for non-town applicants. And I think that question was further muddied by the new language passed in the Economic Development Bond Bill. So it's question marks for a variety of reasons.
They, they were clear that they've been wrestling with this question.
Yes.
They, they will let us know.
And then lastly, we made clear that the town is talking about a potential special town meeting if the outcome of the election on 14th is to repeal the zoning. And basically the conversation was please, please call us after quarantine if the zoning's repealed and we will have further discussions about what that next step might look like. So that's the update.
Okay, thank you.
Have any answer questions if I can.
Not surprising.
Thank you for giving that information.
Yeah.
I did have one suggestion, so I want, I mentioned this last time. I guess since they've confirmed that they would consider us out of compliance, January 1st through 14th, the guidelines also say that we remain in interim compliance during their review. For that reason, it seems like it makes sense for us to submit on December 31st, to give us as much time for their review as possible so that we maintain compliance.
So we did follow up in that vein to see if that would matter and their response was that it would not impact their view because they know that we have this referendum scheduled. They know that our zoning is suspended, so whether we submit now or December 31st, the reason that they will deem us non-compliant is because the election is scheduled. And so the zoning, in their mind, is suspended and not in effect. So they conveyed to us that that wouldn't make a difference.
Okay. This is certainly their determination. I feel like there may be arguments that we could make, at least, I think there are arguments that a referendum is part of our charter and the zoning will not be effective finally until the Attorney General approves it. And so the designation was suspended is just a little confusing to me.
I think Town Council made an argument to that effect, that they said, we hadn't thought about that. We'll reread chapter 46 and 5 and your charter together and we'll let you know if we would agree with you. So they were, they were clear that we were not in compliance, but then they said they would, it was a novel argument that they would look at.
So does that mean it's not definitive that we would be out of compliance during this? What does that mean?
They said we would be out of compliance. We made an argument, they said, we'll think about it. That's where we're at.
Okay. I'm not, I'm frustrated in general, I'm not frustrated at you.
I know that. I think we all feel the same.
So we'll stay in touch with them.
All right. Thank you, Katie. So here's the thought, I think we should take a position on the upcoming town election. Others, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I would agree. I think we, we took a position on the zoning prior to town meeting in favor of it and all of those reasons why we did that still exist. Beyond that, we are now going to be out of compliance for a minimum of 14 days between January 1st and January 14th and perhaps until sometime in February when we could have a special town meeting. I'm particularly concerned about the funding for the NHA during that period because the applications are due and were due in late November. I don't know when they'll make a decision. To risk that would be a terrible thing. So I think we had all of the reasons that we had before town meeting, plus we have the compliance reasons now. So to me, it's very clear that we should take a position here to maintain what town meeting did.
So, Mr. Chair, I tend to agree it's perfectly appropriate for us to take a position. I would just suggest maybe we wait until the next meeting to do so because the one other thing that we don't know is how the SJC will rule. And it's possible that they don't rule by then and we, I, I would still feel comfortable taking a position at our next meeting even if they don't rule, but I want to give them as much time as possible because that is a big consideration when it comes to compliance.
I, I feel similarly, that we should definitely take a position, but I don't agree with you on, on waiting. And the reason is that there will be, there is a potential that voting will start before our next meeting. These ballots could be available as early as December 10th and I think that, you know, residents deserve to understand where we stand on this issue. And I don't think that the, the SJC ruling will necessarily affect Needham's issue. Our election will still move forward and voters will still have to make this choice because this election is scheduled. And so I think that we should be taking a position so that residents understand where we stand.
I would just, in seconding that, I would just add, at least from my perspective, the threat of the AG suing us for non-compliance never was the major motivator, I think, at least for me, but I think for town meeting in, in voting for the neighborhood plan. And we're looking at potentially a large amount of funding and, and that is not affected by the SJC. What, what the SJC decision would affect is whether the AG would sue us.
There is another consideration that the SJC is, is considering, whether the guidelines were improperly promulgated and are in fact regulations.
I, I understand that, but I think you've got so much discretion here when you have decision-makers that have discretion and they are looking at applicants who are in compliance versus applicants who are not in compliance. They're going to pick the applicants who are in compliance and, and that's a risk that I, I think we already can see and know about. And I would also like to have the time for voters to understand our position and to educate because this is a very complicated issue.
So the, the SJC, because the SJC is looking at whether the guidelines may have in fact been regulations, they may be in, we don't know what they're going to rule, but if they have a question about the guidelines themselves, that is what determines compliance and that's what determines the deadlines. And so if they say the guidelines are in fact regulations and you have to go back and follow the administrative process, then we are not in fact out of compliance January 1st. That would be a huge change to our situation.
The way I see it though, sorry, Mary, you want to go?
So I just wanted to say that whether we're in compliance or out of compliance, to some extent, none of this matters, right? We, we were on a path to update our housing plan. That was where we started and I don't want us to lose track of that. There has been four years of worth of work trying to get to the point where we are bringing the housing plan. And I do understand that when we went to town meeting, we actually brought town meeting a choice that had a base plan and had a plan with more housing in it. The plan with more housing in it was a plan that was consistent with the vision that came out of that townwide process to build a housing plan for Needham. So for me, I think the real question is sort of resolving what path Needham is on with this and the in or out of compliance is definitely problematic.
And the in or out of compliance is definitely problematic in this moment, but I don't think it changes anything that occurs right now. And it's important for us to be on this path to resolve this question relating to housing and what Needham wants to do with housing going forward and creating opportunities that create these different types of housing that bring in more socioeconomic factors, that let our seniors stay here, that could let our workers stay here, that could let younger people be here, all those things that we were trying to accomplish by putting this new zoning in. So I think we move forward. That would be my view.
I'm so glad you said that because that is exactly what I was, what I was thinking and, and would have expressed far less eloquently as usual. I, I would like to say that because town meeting passed our base compliance separately from, although understanding that the machinations have intertwined them, but they were given a second option to pass the neighborhood housing plan in response to Needham's issues, you know, to, in order to address what town meeting ultimately saw as deficiencies in our housing in a plan that was completely separate from base compliance. I feel like it is entirely reasonable for us to say that, assuming we agree, that, that we want to affirm their action because, because they went above and beyond of their own accord. There was no forcing, and it was intended to address Needham's housing problems, which still exist and which we still hope to convey to the voters in town that we still need to address. So that would be my argument.
Can I make one other point? I, I think many of us read the article in the Globe today about Lexington and the housing that has started to occur there. There, there is a line that's toward the end of the article that says something to the effect of, "Many towns have passed zoning that is compliant but is known to produce no housing." And I think that's the way that we all understand our base plan, which is that the base plan is compliant. It really matches zoning that's already in place that hasn't produced housing. We are not expecting a great deal of housing to be produced from that base plan. And therefore, I would go back to, we were trying to work as a town for a vision that did provide some additional housing of a certain type that would be responsive in the plan that was brought forward that town meeting approved.
Okay. I guess I would say about the court case, we can't, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But I'm sensitive that voting will be starting soon. And the fact of the matter, this is a good plan for Needham. I know a lot of communities don't necessarily love the MBTA plan, but my contention is that it appears that it was created for Needham. It works on our spine down Island and Chestnut. We have four stations. This is a brilliant opportunity to allow seniors to stay in town to empty nest and stay within the community. And I think anyone, I have met no one in Needham who says, you know, Needham downtown is too vibrant as it is. Chestnut Street really needs help. This is a huge boost for the community. This is a win for us, whether the state was asking us to do it or not. So I'm very comfortable. I think we should absolutely do this, and I'm not even concerned. I mean, the issues of compliance and funding is a whole nother thing, but we should be doing this for ourselves. This is a big win for Needham if we did this, and I'd encourage people to vote for it.
Yeah. I guess I'd also say that I'm just sensitive to the amount of time and effort that town meeting members really put into understanding the plan. And they worked, they worked hard. They did a lot, I feel like they did a lot more for this town meeting than is normally expected of them. There were a lot of extra meetings, and I appreciate the effort that they put in, and I, I would like to support the position that they took.
I, I, I'm always supportive of town meeting and will always defend the actions of town meeting. But even the actions of town meeting are not supreme to the, the actions of the voters.
Clearly, this is, this is a charter. I mean, you know, it's the process, but I, I agree with the, the work that they put in and the, and the support that we had for the original plan. So I guess I would say I would continue that support.
Yeah. So the reason why I just brought that up is, is to acknowledge the nearly 4,000 people who signed the petition. That's a really big statement from a lot of people in town, and I am listening to them. I mean, I hear a lot of people saying that the neighborhood housing plan does not satisfy the needs of the community in the way that, that they specifically want. People have been saying, you know, they look at Muzzy and they see it's completely empty. They would love to have housing there, but the MBTA Communities Act doesn't allow housing a certain amount outside the half-mile radius. People claiming, people claiming, you know, that they want to see more starter homes, and the MBTA Communities Act doesn't allow, you know, starter homes specifically. So I think people who sign the petition are just mainly saying that they want to be able to address the specific needs of Needham as well. And when, when you have the neighborhood housing plan, we had all these studies that show that we, we can accommodate a lot of the growth in the neighborhood housing plan in, in traffic, in sewer and water. There are some areas where we can't, like in schools, like Pollard gets very tight. But, but then there's a question, what about when we do want to get to starter homes and we do want to get to, you know, maybe Muzzy or areas elsewhere? Is there room for that? And so those are the types of things that I'm hearing from residents, and so I'm, I want to listen to them as well.
Yeah. I don't think that anything, that any of the suggestions that you just made are precluded by this plan. And in fact, I think it's, it's a little bit disingenuous to suggest that, especially in this context, because why people were signing this petition was so that they would have the chance to vote. We're not asking them not to have the chance to vote. We're just saying, what is our position on the vote that they're taking? They can disregard it for sure.
Mary Ann, you have a thought?
Well, I, I would just say that I think that the, the questions around Muzzy and starter homes, to the extent that people are interested in those, are, are still viable options.
Absolutely.
And there can be zoning that comes back that relates to those. There is an option for housing at Muzzy. It wasn't preferred before by the developer, but the developer may make a different decision, and that is still their right to go ahead and do that. The question about starter homes, you know, I, I think the town will need to think about, I think it's unlikely that somebody who owns an existing house on a lot will choose to sell their property for less. Okay? Which is what it would take to maintain starter homes.
Except that my starter home was a condo.
So they need to work in their own self-interest, right? And we don't always see that. We see that happening, but that has led to larger homes replacing starter homes. So it could be that Needham's going to need to consider other zoning, like cluster homes and things like that. But again, that's beyond the work that we're doing right now. There's room for all these different models in the town in the right place.
But I, I will say again, like my starter home was a condo. So I, I don't, I don't think that there's, it's fair to say that these things are not mutually, you know, available. Like, all of these things can exist at once. I, all I'm saying is that the passage of this particular zoning doesn't preclude any of these other ideas. And I wouldn't like to think that, that people are taking away the impression from this conversation or any other that because this zoning is in place, that they can't build starter homes, or that Muzzy couldn't decide, the private, the private owners of the Muzzy lot couldn't decide to change their plan. It doesn't, none of this is related to that. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
I think it's important to.
Yeah. I guess I would, I would just say that the neighborhood plan does not solve every problem. It cannot solve every problem. However, it does provide for multifamily housing in a area of town that could use some revitalization, which is walkable to the train, which is semi, you know, office industrial. It's not, you know, none of it is in an area of single-family homes. And so I think this is something that would renew a part of town which needs renewal, which would provide a category of housing that we have a little bit of, but basically not enough. So there are other things that need to be, you know, done, or ideally would be done, but this could do something important, and it solves a piece of it, not all of it. But that's not a reason to throw it away. You know, the fact that it doesn't do everything, you know, it does, it does some very important things that will be very valuable, and certain categories of buyers, you know, whether it's the young person, and I think, I think, you know, we heard it earlier in the public comment, whether it's the young person trying to get into town, whether it's the older person who wants to downsize, you know, there's a, there's a category of buyers who would really be served by this. And I think it's very worth doing. And I do think for myself, I can envision a Chestnut Street that is walkable, where there are shops and restaurants, and it's vital, and, and some of those people don't, you know, they don't need two cars. I take the train every day. You know, you could have a couple, one person take the train, one person take the car. It's great for the environment. I mean, they're, you know, smart development, right? I think this is a good thing. It doesn't solve every problem, but it doesn't have to to be worthwhile.
I've heard Josh's, what you're hearing, the complaint that this does not solve it. You know, it doesn't do senior housing, it doesn't do low-income housing, but it doesn't cure cancer, it doesn't clear up my skin. I mean, there's things, it can only do what it does. And it's very, it's just, and that's the way it is. It's, you know, we don't want perfection to be the enemy of good, so.
I think those are all things that we can work on. They're just not, this is not, you know, the, the right tool to address starter homes necessarily, although, again, starter home, condo. But, so, so it can be, but it's certainly not going to fix everything. That doesn't, I think it's still worthwhile and something that I'm.
So, Mr. Chair, just one, I don't think I was being disingenuous by, by making those arguments. I don't think the petitioners are either.
Okay.
And, and I don't think you're wrong that it's necessarily incompatible with doing more zoning later. My point is that there are opportunity costs. There are, there are physical infrastructure limits that really take a lot of investment to overcome. You know, building a new school is a huge investment if we ever had to get there. And so there are limits to how fast we can do all of these different proposals. And the neighborhood plan is a proposal that may limit, in the short term, other types of proposals because of those infrastructure requirements.
None of those proposals are on the table. So I, I would, I guess I would just say in, in response to that, that all of these proposals, this one is like, what, 23 years in the making, take a long time to generate. And since there isn't another proposal on the table, why, why stop this because of some potential future thing? We haven't studied anything else. We haven't, you know, I think that when something is underway, an opportunity cost exists for stopping it. And, and this is a good plan, a solid, measured, modest plan that despite a discussion of schools, everyone involved in all of those committees and, and departments in town have all stood up and said that this is well-supported. The school committee said that they can, they can support the, the product of this plan. So yes, the future is unknown and something could happen. And, but barring a better alternative available to us right now, I don't see any reason to stop.
Mary Ann.
So I, I wanted to concur with the point that Heidi just made, which is, while, Josh, you've raised the risk of the infrastructure related to a new school, all the data that we have suggests that a new school is not a risk. All right? And also, I just want to note that on December 17th, we will have updated data to see if we've continued to outrun the demographics of the area or not, and, and what that future is looking like again lately, and how much room or lack of room that gives us. So we'll have that discussion again, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean a new school related specifically to neighborhood housing plan. But if we wanted to do any of these other housing initiatives, who knows what would, I mean, like, there, there are just questions about what it would require.
Right.
Do you want to study it?
Yeah. But that's a conjecture on a conjecture about a position, a plan that doesn't exist.
No, but it, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm not making the point about what if and how about this, and, you know, there are all these other possibilities. I'm making the point that people in town have said for a long time they want to see more starter homes. Like, these are real desires that, that have been voiced for a really long time, and...
As are these real desires that have been voiced for a very long time.
Right.
So...
You make, no, I understand that. And also the, you know, the second half of the Needham Housing Plan was all about Needham being overhoused in some, in enormous housings. That's a whole nother thing. But right now, we're talking about achieving the MBTA law. And so I get you, you're, you're right. But right now, we're discussing about how to achieve compliance and how to revitalize a downtown area. So it's on the to-do list, but this is what we're doing right now. And so I think, you know, I would support this. Anything else? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair. I move that the board vote to support the yes position on the ballot question and the ratification of the zoning adopted under Articles 8 and 9, including the amendments in Articles 10 and 11 of the October 21st, 2024 Special Town Meeting.
Second.
More discussion.
One more point.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote no on this because, and I, I think it's not for any different reason than what we were discussing. I prefer the base plan. I think that it allows us more flexibility to do additional things in the future. That being said, I really do hope that members of the planning board would consider accelerating, teeing up, in essence, the possibility of a special town meeting afterwards, because I'm very concerned about the possibility of being out of compliance. I don't want that to happen. I want to be out of compliance for as little time as possible.
Okay.
We all share that.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Okay. Let's have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Good one. Thank you very much. All right. Everyone go vote. Next up, oh, you also, by the way, did see the ballot question as proposed. All right. We have committee reports. It's been a full week since we last met. So how busy have we been? Anyone? Mary Ann?
A committee didn't meet, but Kate and I did meet with the Needham Golf Club. They wished to just talk about where we were currently with respect to quiet zone, what it meant with respect to the private crossing, what might be expected. As I think all of you know, we do not have any answers on the private crossings, but we have asked our consultant, who is preparing for the other five crossings, right, to also give us their best updates and information. And we continue to learn new things about private crossings that we didn't previously know, that seem to open up some chinks in that armor of nothing's possible. So we're optimistic that there may be some alternatives. We'll see. But we did brief them on where we are and what the plan is, and they, they are concerned. Again, an understandable concern that if the town creates quiet zones everywhere but the golf club, that then the golf club will become the focus of people's concern. We're going to work to be solving this as well, so.
Thank you. Kathy, anything? Do your board meeting in Italy? Josh, nothing? Okay.
And no committee meetings, but heck of a lot of tree interviews. So we're still looking to fill the, the two at-large tree committee roles. So if you are a town member or a resident and you want to participate in the tree committee, time is now. Get your application, and we have a few more days of interviews remaining. But particularly, if you are someone, a resident of Needham, who fills the developer, the builder, the landscape architect role, those are roles that we still really need applicants for. So I would encourage you, or someone you know, or someone who helped you once in your yard, or built your house, to encourage them to reach out and, and fill in the application so that we can get this project underway. We can't start the committee until we have the, all the roles filled.
Thank you. This morning, we met with the MBTA Advisory Board, Brian Kane, and he talked about the fiscal cliff looming for the MBTA and of course, its debt burden that it carries. And he was optimistic for this, the next fiscal year, but afterwards, he was concerned that... But afterwards, he was concerned that the model's unsustainable. So, of like a train going off a cliff, how appropriate. So, it's a little doom and gloom. But it does seem like we're in a hole. The state is in a hole that we'll have to dig its way out with it. Tomorrow's Cup and Chaucer at the library can be a new port laureate. And then on Saturday is a blue tree lighting.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock? Five o'clock. It'll be exciting. It'll be great.
Five o'clock, 4:30 at the Heights.
Four, oh, yeah, right, the Heights, 4:30. So, it'll be a great time. Bring snow.
I was going to say, and then there's more. Are you going to keep going?
No.
Sunday is Representative Alkenclaus upstairs at 1:00 P.M.
No, Newman.
No, oh, in Newman, at 1:00 P.M. And then Monday is the party to celebrate the service of Representative Garlic. So, there's lots of festivities that are happening in town. And people have a chance to come out and see one another.
Thank you, Mary. That's great. All right. Anything else? Is all you have?
I had one other thing unrelated to this, if that's okay?
Please do.
Recently, there was a cultural event that was held by Icon. And we ended up not having anybody from the select board there. And I think what I learned after the fact was that I had seen an invitation individually to me. I presumed others had received it individually. And that proved to be not the fact, okay? It was on an evening where I couldn't attend. So, my suggestion is, when I joined the board, we used to do more scheduling emails amongst each other. That's really sort of stopped. But scheduling emails are permitted, because it's scheduling. It's not discussion of a policy matter that's before the board. So, I'm just going to suggest that if people do see something that comes in as an invitation to them, it used to be that invitations all seemed to come to the select board, and everybody knew about them. And we could kind of say, you know, the chair sort of has first dibs. And then beyond that, somebody else could go if you wish to. Or they could say, "I can't go, can somebody go?" I feel like if we can coordinate better, because we now don't all see them coming into select board, they can come over in a million different ways to people. So, just trying to make board members aware of different things. If you see something that comes to you, and it's only to you, or that's all you're aware of. Sometimes, I know we found out, everybody got one individually. But they're all different. So, just trying to coordinate better, I think, will be beneficial for everybody and beneficial for these groups in the town as well, and for us getting out to them.
Yeah, maybe we could also, to the extent possible, request that in addition to inviting individuals, invitations like that are sent to the select board.
Just use your.
Yeah, I feel badly that we missed that.
We have a goal to reach out to all the known groups and let them know, as the board had adopted a goal, that we'd like to attend. And, you know, we could put that comment in there, too. Miles is working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I can stay here all night. Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I could ask one more question.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
All right, this is my kind of meeting.
On the consent agenda, where we had all the different, you know, common victualers and the different licenses, to the extent that there's somebody who we don't see on the list this year,